We have a forum. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is it going great?
Open forum and public input. I don't see anybody here for anything, so we will move on. Approve agenda, changes to the agenda, anything?
I just, I think what was published in the paper, what I did not have on there was an executive session for personnel are illegal. So that would be the only difference.
So I'll accept the motion to approve the agenda with the addition of executive session.
Move back, Sean Feller, second by Paul. Any other discussion? Here now, no favor say. Paul, same sign, motion carried.
Conflict of interest. I don't see any new conflicts of interest. Approve consent agenda. It would be A, approve November amendments, and B, approve claims. Any other questions? Good. Accept the motion.
Move back, Paul, and second by turning her to approve the consent agenda.
Any other discussion? Here now, no favor say. Paul, same sign, motion carried.
And we'll move on to information discussion and staff reports with the high school principal. He is absent, and we have a printed report here.
Mr., excuse me, Mr. Knipling is not here, so he had the boys, but also Kennedy was playing over in, I'm not sure where the game's at.
Freeman.
What is it?
Freeman.
Freeman. So he asked if he could go take part in that, which I said was fine, so he wrote up a little synopsis here, just where things are at in six through 12, and just a little reference there about, I think the main thing is that they've experimented, and he's mentioned that last board meeting about flip-flopping an SRB in a fourth block, and letting the high school kids go a little bit early who met academic expectations that they had put forth on that, and keeping the middle school back and doing some things that are associated with character development, and they did that here a couple of weeks ago, and I think that's just a synopsis of how he felt it went. I think everybody else felt it went well as on top of it. So he's, they're gonna try it again this Friday. So I think the kids were responsive, the middle school kids were responsive, and the high school kids that had to stay back, I think they got some work done with those kids that needed to fill the bucket. So they're gonna test it out one more time and see if it's something that they wanna, you know, continue on in second semester, so. And the other ones are just some recognition of FFA and state FFA, the leadership development contest out in Rapid out of last week. So Grace Lindeman, first overall in employability skills, that's pretty good from the statewide aspect of things, so. And a couple other places, Ellie Garing got third in her ag broadcasting as well, so. Then if you were partaker in the winter concert, I thought that was well done, well attended both the elementary as well as our six through 12, so just recognition for those people. And then next week, this is our last full week, and next week they'll start their semester tests, so they go Monday, and then they have three days of semester testing built in there, so Tuesday, Wednesday, and then Thursday they'll finish up with a couple. And we are out at 1:00 on Thursday, the 21st, so I've had a few people asking that. It's on the school calendar that way. It started making me double, double take and start questioning myself, what did we do there? So, but we are out. So that's Mr. K's report, so.
Okay, any questions? All right, elementary and KD report.
All right. I'll start with the elementary piece. Things have been going well. Just wanted to echo Mr. M's thoughts there. The music performances we had last week were really well done. Just wanted to give a shout out to Mrs. Fink for her hard work, but also all the teachers as well to get all the littles organized, it's beginning garden through second grade, and it kinda takes everybody with all hands on deck to make sure we're marching in the same order and up there ready to sing. And so it was a really fun night, think the kids did well, and, you know, big credit to Mrs. Fink for all her hard work there with that. We're still rolling along with our mindset, so we've been doing a little mini-assembly for each of those, so December marks our new mindset of 100% accountable, so we're just getting started with that one. So that's been going well with the kids, they're really buying into that. Otherwise, I think elementary-wise, things have been going pretty smoothly. Like Mr. M said, we are, you know, one full week here and three and a half days next week, so, but kids have been working hard. I think the teachers are doing a good job of challenging our students, so we're seeing that, and they're responding well to that. I've talked a little bit about our buddy system we've implemented for our preschoolers, beginning garden, kindergarten, and really been loving what I'm seeing with that. The fourth and fifth graders have done an excellent job, really kinda mentoring our younger students, and so just continue to see the positive effects of that in the hallways, in the lunchroom. Any opportunity we have, when we have a mindset assembly, they're sitting with their buddy, explaining how things are happening, working and working with them, so I've really, been really excited about how that's been going. I also wanted to touch on, we did our PD session on Wednesday last week, and thought that was really productive. It was a virtual session with top 20 training, but got really good stuff from that. I'm gonna follow up with our teachers tomorrow at a staff meeting, but heard really positive feedback from staff on that, just about framing the way we're looking at things, especially at this time of year. Everybody's getting a little bit tired and feeling the stress of the holiday season coming, and so it really shed some good light and, I think, positive perspective on things, so just wanted to touch on that. I thought that was really good. As far as, you know, activities, talked about the music, the elementary, high school, middle school had a concert as well and did a really nice job. Winter sports are in full swing, wrestling's going, basketball had their first games on Friday. We'll have our home opener here on tomorrow night, and so everybody is going. Gymnastics is off to a fantastic start. They've been at three meets so far and won two of them, so really doing well there. So I think, you know, we're really, things are going smoothly, so I'm really excited about that. Coaches are working hard, kids are working hard, things are all trending in the right direction. But just in the armory, the big video board is up on the wall now. Mr. M's really been working hard to help kinda lead the way in getting that process, and Brian Jackson with Parks and Electric has helped us quite a bit, so that is coming along nicely. We got a big task of getting the old one down and the new one up, that happened today, so that was pretty exciting. Continue to run the wires, and we'll need Daktronics to come here and finish hooking everything up, so we're hopeful maybe by the classic we would have that operational, we'll see. But that's, you know, I think things are moving along nicely with that, so. I think that's about all I have, unless anybody has any questions.
Shout out to Colin Newton, too. He created, I don't know, an apparatus on the front end of his forklift to get it to decide what the height that needed to be and the angle that it needed to be. I mean, it was sort of one of those things where you really don't know until you start doing it, and you're kinda gonna fly as you're, you're building the ship as you're flying it, so, but he was very helpful in that process, too, because he created some devices on his own forklift to hold this thing in place and put some channels on the bottom of it, or sat in it. I mean, it was just really kinda cool to watch it all develop, but they did a nice job today, so, but, yeah.
Anybody have any other questions? Okay, superintendent report.
If you refer maybe to the notes that I put in your packet, just a couple of things here, you know, I know we're ways away from the January, but we had the gavel program that we've been talking about, and had some leadership development on the board, so that date has been confirmed. I know we had some, Scott, I think you had a little bit of a conflict, and Jill too with some basketball there, but I think everybody said we'd make it work on that date, so. So I appreciate that. Mr. Pro, last, the end of November there, mid-November, I guess, right before Thanksgiving, we haven't met since then, happened a chance to attend the delegate assembly for your associate school boards, your parent organization. I asked him to share a little bit of that if he could and let us know what happened in that large gathering, so.
So if you guys have never been to one of those, it was my first, but this is the, all the different resolutions that you go through, and anyway, so there was about 100 and, don't quote me in this, 130, 140 delegates there.
Really? That's impressive.
Pretty volatile, Mr. McEnroe. So, anyway, it lasted about two hours, but you go through each resolution and approve it, or don't approve it, and I guess in years past, there's been some real contentious debates on certain issues, but there didn't seem to be any here this year, and so, so it went rather well. Again, it's a, it's a sip, but what I passed out to you was, these are the different agendas, the priorities that they have. I circled the ones on the pages here that they're gonna pay special attention to.
During the legislative session.
Right. And so, so I thought that people are looking at, and as I have sent you stuff from the, on the emails, you know, they'll start touching on some of these. But our governor touched on one of them already. Sounds like you're gonna get maybe 4%.
Yeah, well, you know what she puts out there, and that was very gracious and very appreciative, and we'll talk a little bit about that, but there's, it didn't come with some angst, without some angst, so.
The, it's interesting on these resolutions, though, it's just, I mean, they get down to the point of a comma or a word, one way or the other.
To change the meaning of it, absolutely.
Absolutely. And so, you know, I had a lot of that, so. Anyway, it's well worth, you guys ever get a chance, it's worth going there and see what they want to talk about.
A learning experience, thank you, now, for, a veteran even, like you, he was good. Appreciate you going, I truly do, so.
I talked to, a person next to me was a board member from T, and so that was an interesting conversation, and they're gonna build another school.
Yeah.
They've got some land bought already, so, growing.
I don't think, I don't think they have a choice. So, so I appreciate that. Food service review, just refer to Mr. Brain if he wants to say two words about it, good, bad, or indifferent, so.
It actually went really well. They were here for one day, this one lady. They always find some minor little details, but as far as the food that we're serving and stuff like that, none of that was the issue, so. The only thing maybe was the, not enough granola, didn't quite meet the food substitute deal, but that was minor, minor compared to what it could have been for the food side of it. All the little things were, just housekeeping.
The bureaucracy of it.
Yes.
The federal red tape.
The biggest thing is our wellness policy. We're not following, where you gotta, we'll have to go through and do a synopsis or go through it and make sure we're following what we have in policy, and one, we don't have enough stuff in our policy to meet the requirements, so we gotta redo our wellness policy, and we'll be working on that in the next couple of months to get that done. Assessment, that was the word they used.
And that's something we bring back to you guys as a board, so.
Yep, that was the big thing, really.
So they give it enough time to work on it, correct?
Yeah, well, we have to just give our action plan by Friday.
Ah.
We don't have to have it all done by Friday, but that's the only thing we won't have done, is that. All the other things, we did, there was 11 fighting.
Talk about our fund balance?
No. She did tell us one way to do is give free breakfast, yes, shouldn't say that, but free breakfast, we don't, I mean, so you can give free breakfast to everybody, but you can't do free meals.
Okay.
Don't know why. She didn't really, she says, I know it doesn't make sense, but, so that's something we could do for the startup, whenever. You start right away or not, but, you know, we don't serve a lot of breakfasts, and even when we, and not that it wouldn't help, don't get me wrong, it would help some families, but the balance isn't gonna go down in a hurry that way, I don't believe, because we wouldn't have to hire new staff, we wouldn't have to do that kinda stuff to do it. You know, when they had the free meals before, we did free breakfast then, and we were probably around 50-ish to 60 maybe breakfast before, you know, I don't know that we ever got to 200 in a day. 100 to 150 maybe, and 150 was breakfast sandwich days, those are a popular hit, so. They still are, because, you know, every day, the breakfasts are kinda set, Mondays are this, Tuesdays are this, Wednesdays are, and they just know Wednesday is their day that they're gonna get hit, because that's breakfast sandwich day.
It's just hard to convince the older kids to partake in that, even though it's free. Well, one, they're, I would say 40% of them are rolling in here at the stroke of midnight, you know, so they're playing that game, and, you know, and a lot of kids that age, they're not big breakfast eaters, so it's more of our, I would say, elementary, upper elementary, if we really wanted to make a dent, you know, we could really try to work on those kids to, you know, go down again.
And then we'd probably have to get the buses here a little earlier, especially once the weather roads hit. Like right now, we're rolling in in time for them to eat, because I asked them, I mean, I'm not usually the first bus in, I'm about second or third maybe, and I asked Lisa, well, she said, well, her grandkids always come and eat, and I have them, so they're getting there in time now, but we're gonna winter, like last winter, we're gonna have to start a little earlier when we gotta start driving extra miles, possibly, if we have to do that, just because you wanna make it fair to all of them.
Sure.
If we're gonna do it. Something to think about.
Thanks for that, Craig. Special ed review, we had that last week, that actually went really well. There was nothing systemic that they found in their review of going through a lot of IEPs, student IEPs, and, which is a good thing, you never want anything systemic. If they can't identify stuff like that, then it's kinda like what Craig said, even in this stuff, it's crossing the Ts and dotting the Is from a legality perspective, so. They'll go through that in six weeks, we'll get a corrective or an action plan, they'll give us what we need to work on, and, you know, we'll get that drafted, and Tracy Christensen out of James Valley helps us. Between her and I, we'll get that, you know, put together, and our staff will shore things up with that, so. I think the point of reference there is that, just had another two IEP meetings today, but for eligibility-wise, so we're sitting at 83 students in a school district the size of 500, and what do you get paid on, 542. They say on average, 10% of your student population typically on IEPs, which, when I do the math here, with the exception of the 30 that we have on speech IEPs only, so that knocks that down to about 53, and that'd be roughly, right, about 10, 11% of what we are. So I'd say we're probably, you know, where we should be is what they expect or what they say the norm is, so. I thought that was an interesting little tidbit, I thought I would share. Governor's address, like Mr. Pro said, 4% increase, that's what is, she's proposed. We'll see what the 105 that go out there and battle it out, this year it's a 40-day session. I did, we had a soup meeting last week out in Chamberlain, I point-blank asked Senator Crabtree, who was there to speak to us, which was kind of a neat experience, because we've never had that before, and how he felt about the Republican Party, because that's the party in leadership, if he felt that that was something that, it was gonna be a heavy lift, and he said it's always a heavy lift up there, but he felt very confident because of the Republican leadership supporting that 4%, that they would build some pretty high walls around that number, so we'll, we'll see where it ends up going from there, but I thought that was really encouraging to hear, you know, that they will do what they can to protect that, you know, and it's not anything outside of what the governor proposed either, so you don't have to battle that. They haven't been at total alignment the last two years, the governor's office and the Republican leadership, they've, they've kinda marched to their own drummer a couple times, and I don't know if that's put some angst in that whole situation out there or not, but something to watch for, so. And the part that came with a little bit of a shot across the bow is, her and the 105 can only give you so much and pass it and approve it. If you got problems with it, you need to talk to your superintendent and your school board, because they're the ones that are not giving the money. So you guys were implicated as well. So I thought that was interesting in her address that, you know, that, that comment was made, which I suppose in some respects, you know, and I have a document I'm working on that I'm gonna bring to you guys, too, here probably in January, to show you some numbers, but, I don't know, it is what it is, so. And there are, I think, some districts that maybe, for whatever reason, are also differed. You gotta do what you gotta do with the money that you get, and you just can't always say, okay, here it is, teachers, you get it all, boom, here it is, teachers, you get it all. Some can, but some can't either, so. I thought that was interesting. And then the last part there, I just, you know, if you really wanted some late-night reading, take your pack and home and look at that legislative survey that the superintendents go through, and all the questions were asked, and then we gather, we glean our information off of that, and we have discussions, and we did that last Wednesday, but it's just interesting reading, it's interesting to listen or read the comments that are on there. It takes, you know, 10 minutes to browse there, so I would encourage you to do that, so. That's all I got, Mr. Leishman.
Okay, any questions? All right, we'll move on to discussion items. Our next policy review manual. Following ASB, SD policies are being presented for review and a first reading. DDE, DDEA, DFA, and DFB.
So, yeah, DDA is federal, state grants. I've had Craig look at these again, again, this is Craig's bible as far as policies concerned, because everything has to do with finance. The gifts and the donations, the DDE, I think we abide by it, not think, but we abide by that, the revenues from the tax sources from policy DE, DFA is revenues from investments, we abide by that, and then DDA, revenues from school and owned real estate, which if you ever had any of that, you know, it's something that one would have to keep in mind, so. Have you, do you own or the state, for the district, other than what you got under support down here?
Like someplace.
Some schools own houses.
Some smaller schools own houses for their superintendents and stuff like that, yep.
I did have some stuff marked on DDE, like gifting and stuff, and I did, I don't know how to say it, I guess, but seemed, I don't, I don't know, are we, I mean, doing any of this? I really didn't quite understand why we would set up an authorized, private, non-profit, benevolent organization to collect money from us, for us, I guess, and I don't quite understand that.
Yeah, so the board may authorize one or more private, non-benevolent organizations independently with the care of crowns, but to accept and solicit donations, gifts, grants, and private financial resources of the time. The first thing that pops into my head after reading that again would be things like, and I don't know if this, it would be like the South Dakota Foundation.
Bonham had, had a school foundation. We had one at one time.
Yeah, so you could maybe have somebody, an independent third party outside of your guys' directive, yeah, you solicit or, you know, go get the money, where else is money? So with the South Dakota Foundation, you know, that's a whole foundation. I, there are so many organizations that contribute to that, and then they sit there and hold it all in one great big trust fund, and then they do the disbursements out of that. So that's what a.
Madison has one, too.
We had one when some, they donated some money, Delilah Weber money for the school.
Sure.
When she passed away, and they started a 501(c), but it's now, it's just to use that up rather than us, and I think that's what they're talking about there. I know Bonham has one, Madison has one. So I don't know if that answers your question, Mr. Leishner.
Well, yeah, I guess, kinda, but then, I mean, as you go down farther, it's kinda restricting, you know, anything we can do with it, I mean, it's just.
That's where my point was at, too.
You know, if somebody donates $100,000 to pay off our edition, why can't we do that? And that's what it says right here.
The fund should be placed in the general fund and used for expansion and enhancement of curriculum, support of interscholastic activities, initiation of support of musical, forensic, civic, technological, similarity, extraordinary structure, program, special trips or activities, supporting core school activities or other programs or activities, and substantial benefit to the educational environment of the school district. Substantial benefit to the educational environment of the school district.
If you just skip down right here, it says, none of the funds can be used.
Received and given may be used for capital acquisition, debt repayment, ordinary expenditures, expenses. Interesting.
Is that if you have it through the foundation?
Well, yeah, I don't know if that's, if somebody else has got control of that money, you know what, let me do some backtracking on that, and I know who to reach out to to get clarification as to, you know, what that is at the associate school boards level, so I would do that.
Because some of those foundations might say, we want it to be used for a specific situation.
Yeah, I think that's what they would have to honor, you know, if you set something up like that, that's what you guys dictate and as you expect, so, you know, I don't know that they have that, but that's a, it's a great question, so.
But in the last paragraph, I didn't really, right, I mean, I suppose there are districts out there that do that, I don't know that we would ever. Seems like kinda chasing your tail to have a different organization get the money for the event to be used for school.
Okay, so that is derived, I can tell you where that portion of this policy is derived from, and there is a foundation at the South Dakota High School Activities Association, and that was set up when Mr. Kearney was still in leadership out there, and that caused, I can't tell you the amount of angst, how that whole process unfolded, the structure of it, how it was organized, how it was sold, and what the commercials were, and tried to get people to contribute to that, and I think at the time, a lot of it was centered around the notion that the reason for the foundation is that there was pockets being filled on the backside of it. And in all actuality, and it's still in existence today, it's, and they probably got about $130,000 in this foundation. It turns out that that wasn't the case, but the way Mr. Kearney went about putting it into reality through the board, their board of control, and how he just disseminated it was not well received by, I would say, 80% of the superintendents of the state of South Dakota. So, with that said, that's what that is referencing, so what, and one of the questions was at the time, one of the ideas to build the foundation, they wanted school boards, you guys, to consider taking money out of your own general fund and starting this whole foundation up with whatever contribution you were willing to give to get this thing up and going. And if every school district across the state did that, whatever amount, you would start with seed money, right, and then it would be invested, and then it would grow. Well, he ran into a brick wall when he upset a last superintendent about how he did, because then the guy sitting in the chair, you think they're gonna go back to you guys as board members and say, oh, yeah, this is a good thing. Well, in hindsight, it is doing good things, because right now, they're struggling to even disperse the money. I was told here, just last week, we had this conversation, that there's school districts that, which, so maybe something we can consider, I don't know, somebody told me, they, one school district, I can't remember who it was, asked for something that one would never even think that it would be an acceptable ask. They asked the foundation for it, and they gave them to it because they didn't have anybody else ask. And it was something a little bit ridiculous.
They asked for a donation for our edition.
Yeah, that's, well, the equipment inside of it or something. But it had to be something useful activities-wise for kids. It was something as obscure as like a blocking dummy. I mean, and they said, okay, yeah, fine, we'll buy you one.
So, I don't know, just in general, when you look at this particular page here, it's just so much more in-depth than the rest of them, and I just feel like it's over my head.
Good. Let me do some homework, if that's acceptable.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Good. Perfect.
Maybe also any other questions on that? Okay, I will accept the motion, well, I guess we redo it.
No, just your first reading, yeah, that's all you need on that.
So then we'll move on to B, which is just a review, second reading, of the policies as printed there.
Right. So the only thing I would say to that one, and those three that I included in there that we had discussions on last month, so Craig and I worked on DC, which is taxing and borrowing authority, and we cleaned that up, because there was some terminology in there where the dollars that were in there is not, that's not law.
Right, Craig?
Yeah, that was the special ed one, right?
So we cleaned that, yeah, and got rid of. So we cleaned that. Yeah. We got rid of that. And then custodial funds, I think we made a few changes to that, which didn't really change any of the context of the, um, the actual policy and what could be done with that. And then the third one was the IGCB and that was the distance learning policy. Um, and we did some revamping of verbiage on that. And I know some of these were front, or you can, you got the back or the second page. Um, and we cleaned that up where, uh, the very last part of that was where the dollars will be borne by the parent and the student. So, um, there's certain things there that are in virtual learning that the parent and the student and/or the student are responsible for rather than the, the school district. So we cleaned those up and then we're submitting those today for, you know, a second meeting. So.
Okay. If anybody had any questions on those? All right. We'll move on to C. This is the final reading of the policies CIA, CK and CM. If anybody doesn't have any questions, I'll accept a motion to approve those policies.
Second, move back pro and say by Sean Feller to approve CI, CIA, CK and CM policies. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried.
Item B, building project update.
Okay. So, um, putting my notes there, um, you got the building project and your H V C. So the H V C component, again, that, that project is kind of at a low right now, but they have been working as even as late as last week. Um, they have the coil in on the east side of the MPR, that's the AC coil. And that had to be redone and then the plumbing's done. And then actually climate system was here and did the work on it. So it's actually, I think, functionable. And if we needed AC, we could throw the switch to that and it'd be a done deal. Um, so that's, uh, all ready to go for next spring. So, um, and then the building update, I just put in there, um, obviously the, all the precast is set and they're starting to tie it together with all, uh, the rafters. Um, construction meeting on Thursday. Um, they didn't realize it, but they said this has got more way welding than they've had in most of their normal projects. So, um, if you get a chance, I mean, I know it's kind of chilly out and stuff, but one time, just go walk in there one time and look up and see all the steel plating that lies within the precast that you weld all the cross bracing and the cross members and then all your rafters too. I mean, it's like, one wouldn't think about it until you go in there and you start looking around. So this week is all about welding for those guys and that's Pitts doing it. So I kinda gave them a reason. We just got one guy here or what? I mean, and they said, no, we got four guys here welding. So, um, but other than that, it's, uh, I think that we're kind of back on track progress. And again, hoped to get all that welding done. The steel erection on the part that you see, well, there is missing precast there. That's actually steel erection on the north corner and the west corner. So there's no more precast there. That goes up steel erection on the outside. There's gonna be a siding that goes on that. But once they get that up, then they can tie the rest of the rafters on for what we would call the fitness space. So, um, and that gets a little bit of block in it too. It's like six rows of block, you know? And then that's where those bay, I don't know the bay windows, but those sets of windows are gonna be on that north corner and that west, that west corner. So, um, but I, you know, it was a good, uh, meeting. Uh, we, they made, I, I told them the decision of about the, the training room and not put in a cement stoop in there and, and they were good with that. And then the only other really thing it did is pick out a, for that flooring in there and area C, uh, um, an epoxy, that's gonna be the flooring that goes over that flooring. And we did all the chase work instead of, you know, jackhammering that all out there. But there, Jake is working on, uh, the change order for that. And we should see something here within a month or two about a deduct on that because of the work that's being saved, um, on that. So other than that, um, I was surprised when I told them, I said, you know, we got some decisions to make late in the spring about, uh, the equipment, um, that's would potentially go into the fitness space. You know, we brought you that number here probably, I don't know, Mr. Fisher, if you're listening, um, when we brought the number for the, um, fitness space from, uh, push pedal and pull. I don't remember when we did that. We showed them those numbers, but, um, we put a purchase order in. Supposed to be putting a purchase order in to them in order to secure the equipment. They'll, they'll hold it. Uh, but that transformation in order to clear everything out of what is now the existing weight room, making that transition into area B, which is the new part of it, and taking all the stuff out of the weight room and putting it either in what is gonna be the new wrestling room or even into the new fitness space, which I'm not keen on because we're gonna have push pedal and pull come in here and do that. So we may have to do a, a punch list, a completion list for one of those two areas before it's truly done, just to be able to move stuff out of that existing weight room space out. So they can start tearing into that, you know, when they do. But they won't do a lot in there because they can't do anything till school's out. I mean, they might play in there a little bit overhead or something like that, but they're not really gonna do a whole lot in there. That's, that's where we're at with, uh, both of those projects. So.
I'm changing gears on you a little bit. How are we doing with heating?
Awesome. Awesome. I, it's been, I don't, I don't lay awake thinking about it and it's not the first thing I do when I come to work anymore and spend a half hour on. The only one issue we got left is Mrs. Fink's music room and the control, basically the control panel in that thing is shot. They told me. And he gave me a quote to fix it and it's anywhere from twelve to fifteen hundred dollars. And that's more about the labor aspect to tear it out of the ceiling, to get it down so they can put and get to the control part of it and put a new control in it. Well, that new control will be what would be going into the new unit. It's kinda like we gotta do it twice. Right now she's getting by and the weather's been favorable. We got two space heaters in there, you know? So I'm waiting on perhaps a quote to change out a breaker in that room so I could run three. I think if we ran three, uh, space heaters in there, we could keep it at a level where it's comfortable in there. And you know, when you stick 20 little bodies in there, ninety eight point six degrees, I mean, and it's in and out, in and out, in and out. I think it does pretty good. And she knows, I explain everything to her and she gets it. She's been very gracious and very accommodating and understands, but I just don't know if, I haven't made the decision whether we're gonna spend fifteen hundred dollars to put the control panel in there when it's coming out in four months. So this seems a little, kind of a tough pill to swallow. But if, depends on what they're gonna charge to, you know, I think flip flop that amp in there, um, that's in the circuit breaker. I don't think it'll be a lot, but I haven't had a chance to talk to, uh, Parkson Electric about that to see what they would charge me to do that. Cause right now I can't.
Plug a third minute in trips.
Yeah. Something else, she's got something else plugged in in the room, you know, which in a room like that, there's other things plugged in that's.
You got, you got three farmers here. We can go take care of it quick.
Well, yeah. You may be called upon, Mr. Leishner.
Just don't call as an inspector.
You can always do your own one. I don't think it qualifies here, but anyway. So, um, yeah. Good question. I think I answered that, John. No, it's been, very pleased. It's, it's been a load off. So.
Okay. Any questions? All right. We are down to, uh, action items approved financial report.
Uh, we still have capital. Yeah, I did a capital.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're good. I included that. I think I went back on last year's, uh, agenda there and that's the one with the purple on it. And we did have it in there in December. So it's just kind of food for thought for you guys to start thinking about. And I know a little different mindset on that, guys, is that you're like, well, just tell us the stuff, you know, tell us what you wanna do. Well, that's kinda what we're doing. And then when I ask to prioritize that stuff, I know it's really about a number and I think it's hard to do any of that until you get some numbers with that. But those are just some projects that Craig and I have sat down that, you know, things that we think we need to start thinking about as we continue to move on. And I understand we got a building project going on, but, and some of them are associated with the building project, uh, things that were not in the building project that we're gonna have to, uh, you know, address at some point in time here in the near future in order for that thing to come to, um, completion. I don't know that we ever circled back. Mr. Fisher and I met this fall with a gal on our playground and I had mentioned before we wrote a playground, I wrote a playground grant and we were successful in that. And she actually came and spent a couple of hours with us. So, um, we were behind the eight ball as far as the timeline. We had to be submitted by the end of October of this year for this upcoming, um, summer. So this thing's gonna be pushed off. As you can see, I put there summer of 2025, but it is a true matching grant on the piece of equipment itself. So, and I said, was there a limit to that? She goes, well, not really. I mean, if you wanna put the Taj Mahal out there, you just gotta remember if it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollar playground, it's a matching grant. So that means you gotta pony up a hundred and fifty thousand dollars too. Not for all the pieces, just for the one main piece of playground equipment. So there's some different things there that she's working on. She's gonna put some renditions together. She's gonna bring it to us. And I know, uh, we have a playground committee. When we get to that, we'll, we do that as well. So that's just one more thing to think about. But we had that earmarked, did we not, Mr. Bruni? Right?
Yeah.
We talked about that in the past.
Yeah.
Um, if you look at down number eight, bleachers in the current MPR facility, you know, where we're at in the whole midst of things and after this basketball season, I don't know, Craig and I have talked, I think we would like to get rid of them, to be honest with you.
If, if those aluminum rollaways that we can move back and forth work out well.
Between the two facilities, not when the new one gets built. But I don't know what it's gonna take to get rid of them. I don't know how much manpower that is.
Just some bolts on the wall.
Yeah. I don't, you know, just to get it out the door and they're not worth anything. You may be surprised to.
They're hard to pull out.
Yeah. But somebody would take them. I don't know. They'd be doing you a favor, in my opinion. So, but the, the aluminum aspect is more of a expenditure on our part. So, um, getting enough sets of those. Um, parking lot repairs, I didn't get it done this fall, but I promised in the springtime, and I've already talked to Craig about this, he probably doesn't remember, but him and I are gonna go walk that footprint. And it's not, yes, we will replace some concrete, but I, I would suggest the better part of that and the crack in the foundation aspect of things is that one of two things, you probably either, um, you could do a membrane on those cracks, like, uh, like a Pro Seal or a Clark paving or something like that. And you would go out there with a, a walking wheel, you know, and walk every one of those cracks and just keep on adding up. You're gonna come up with a linear feet and as to how much of that needs to be, you know, crack sealed and then, cause the cement caulk, you guys know more about that stuff than I do, but you know, you see a lot of it. Well, in fact, we even got it out here in front. You're, you're putting your seams with that gray stuff, you know? I don't think they make enough caulk for you, Craig, out there. You'd be better off. That's why I say I suggest crack sealing, but getting a bid from like Pro Seal or a Clark paving or somebody who does that. So something to think about. Um.
Yeah, I would agree. There's some, there's some bad chunks out there.
Yep. There's some stuff that does need to be replaced.
A lot of it's just sealing. Yeah.
Yeah. I would agree. But Craig, well, I, we'll go out there and we'll walk that and we'll kinda even designate spots where I think we need, uh, you know, tear it up, cut it out, you know, square it up, put a new, a new pad in there, so to speak, to sure it up. And then we'll get some quotes on that. Upgrade a door security, that goes along with the project. That was not in our project. Now that we have that new footprint, we're gonna have to take a look at some of that stuff.
There's a homeland security grant too.
Right. Yep. And those things are, yeah. And I think that's something that we essentially can tap into. The only part that that doesn't tap into is the rest of it. The bell system, phone system, the P A system. Um, I don't know. That's, we had some issues this fall, um, with it. If you can look up here at the clock, that thing's not right. You know, it's not that late. You know, it's about fifteen minutes. I cannot get that thing to reset. Doesn't matter what we do up in the control panel. And that's not the only clock like that. Um, that doesn't work, uh, correctly. So one more thing, you know, that we could potentially take a look at. The door magnets, I think we're pretty close to getting that squared away in the high school end. I think we get about another seven rooms, we'd be pretty close to being done with that project. So we can get rid of all the door stops that we get written up on the foot and Marshall year after year after year. So, um, the junior high bathroom remodel, that's been going really well. I mean, that's things solid as a rock. And I go in there frequently because I wanna know what the animals have done to it, you know, and it's, it's held up really nice. So my suggestion there is something we take a look at in the commons, um, two bathrooms, you know, or during basketball and athletic events. Those two things are.
And then you're just talking to sinks there.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. If we did exactly what we did.
Cause we just redid that one not too long ago. With the, but I don't know that we did that part of it. We did the, the tile on the wall and stuff like that, but I don't know that the sinks were involved.
Well, if you did.
They haven't, that, that soap dispenser's been leaked on to the one for.
Right.
Years. Yeah. Kids just keep pushing.
But I think we did both those bathrooms for what? Seven?
Something like that.
Right. It'd be well worth it. As much as they get used during the day, during the lunchtime and then basketball games and volleyball games and any other activity you got going on in there, it's heavily, heavily used. So it's more, yes, it is functional. It does function, but it's more of an aesthetic thing too. It's, it's just kinda hard to stay on top of. So then the last one on the second page of all that stuff, which there's plenty of other ones to pick and choose from, but, um, you know, looking at some cabinetry for that art room. So, and then it's just prioritize, you know? So I'll just, that's, that's all I got, guys. Just something to start thinking about. So.
And remind me.
Yes, sir.
The armory entry. Are we done there? I can't picture the floor.
Yeah.
That got done? Okay.
So in the commons though, and I still got this guy and in fact, I, I told Craig, he reached out to me a month ago. So we just had that whole art, uh, commons redone with Tarazo.
That's what, that's what I meant.
That's what you were talking about. Yeah. So the second piece of that, don't ask me why, but that's where the bubbles are, just like we had previously. But this guy called me from Omaha, DeMarco's and company, cause they're the ones that did it. And he said, hey, I haven't forgot about you. He said, I, I'll get up there, I promise. And, you know, when he's coming this way. So where that's gonna lead us, I don't know, but trust me, I'll press pretty hard.
The bubbles came back is what you're saying.
It's just like it did before.
Oh, yeah.
A little wider.
Only that one. So like this, there was one, two, there's like three of these and it's got it all seened out, you know? This one's fine. This one's fine. This one, it looks like it's got the mumps. Don't ask me why. But he's, well, and he prom, he told me a month ago and he called me out of the blue. Cause I thought we got, yeah, right. Not my problem anymore. I got my money. But he said, no, he's, I'll come. So anyway, yeah.
I had a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
More just out of discussion.
Yep.
Number seven. Had we even talked to the city about?
No. Nothing on a formal level. On an informal level with some conversations with some people. Yeah. I, Craig's done.
I think in these, what is gonna happen? It's gonna have to be a, our board, their board getting together.
That's just what I was gonna think if.
And maybe it's a committee portion or something.
Maybe we have our mayor come down here and just meet with us and just see what his thoughts are. I ain't saying we're supposed to go either which way.
Yeah. Yep.
But just see if there's a need of more.
Well, they tell us there's a need. I mean, that's what more of the conversation's been about is the need is realized, the need is valid and the need is there.
But then maybe they could budget also.
Exactly. Yeah. If we put something actually on paper as to what we plan for, what date is this, you know, type of deal. But, you know, there's something there to be said, something to think about. When you're talking about youth programs, and I know they're not talking about just youth because one of the biggest issues Craig, correct me if I'm wrong, is that you only have one field that's got, uh, down the line, three hundred plus feet. And that's part of the problem, correct? As far as the number, you got two amateur teams, you got a legion team, you got two teenager, one teenager team?
Two teenager teams.
Two teenager teams.
Sometimes three.
So they're all playing on this. So they're all playing on this only one field, right? Now we have softball, and it's only a matter of time.
And then everything else is played on the one orange field, because there's hardly anything played downtown anymore.
Right.
Because they're too small.
Too small. Baseball field. So where I was going with that, just put this in your back pocket, in your think cap on. If you did something like that, the ongoing cost associated with that, a process where you could take all upkeep out of it. So there's one way to do it, and that is turf.
Turf.
So if you look at Sanford complex that's out on the north end of Sioux Falls by the Pentagon, what they just did out there, the whole entire footprint, there's not a blade of real grass on that thing. You know what I mean? So it's something longevity wise, you'll, nobody would ever, ever have to really touch again. Does it have to be that way? Absolutely not. But, I mean, it's just a thought. If you're gonna do something from a developmental perspective.
Drake Field and Mitchell is that way, too, right? Or is it not the outfield?
They still have grass in the outfield.
But the infield is all turf.
Right. Yeah, it's like even over here across the street.
That's just base.
You got baselines, but you got grass on the infield.
Everything on the infield is turf. Then the ones in Sioux Falls are all.
You don't have to mark it anymore. You don't have to mow it. You don't have to put water on it. You don't have to fix holes in it, you don't, I don't know, it's just a thought. I mean, it may be a pipe dream, but it's worthy of a conversation when it gets to that point, so. If you want to get some more formal conversations out, other than I think what we've already had, that's up to you guys.
I think that's kind of the next step. I don't know if anybody wants, you know, who, who initiates it. I don't know that it matters, but I think both are interested in the conversation from my gatherings.
They certainly are. The question is, are we? Because, I mean, you know where the space is out there, so.
For our land purchase there a number of years ago, that was directed at what you're talking about here.
That it was, that's what it was for, right, correct?
Potential.
Yeah. It's just a matter of.
I mean, I have the quote from when we, I don't know, oh eight, nine, I don't even remember when MacTash had the movable fence from a softball field all the way out to a baseball field. Little bit more now than what it was then.
You know, but if you did something like that, you know, here's another thing, people would probably, anybody watches is gonna be like, oh my God, they're crazy. If you got to that point, you might as well take a look at what you got on that football field, too.
Sure.
I mean, there's more fields around the state of South Dakota that have turf on it that you don't even know exist, like have turf on it. Just a thought. I, it's perfectly fine the way it is, trust me, I don't have any issues with that, and I love grass, you know? But from a longevity perspective, again, it's something to think about, so. But yeah, we can be, that's what you guys, if you want us to be, you know, with the needle, or, you know, if you wanna wait till this project's done, if we're talking about a year from now, I mean, it just, you guys tell me.
I don't, I don't think we're gonna do this right out north here next year.
No, I don't.
But, but I think.
But then each, each group can start planning.
Well, absolutely. You gotta lay the seed.
If they're interested, not if we're interested in doing the mine deal or not, you know, what year is it, when is it, how long down the road?
And maybe they've got some money that we don't know about. I mean, I don't know, I haven't been to a state council.
Yeah.
See, I think it's worth a discussion.
Okay, absolutely.
Then number thirteen.
Yep, track resurfacing paint.
Freshened my mind that we just did a real nice facility out here, but tell me what that costs.
So, and I can only go on based on, you know, and I think you guys had this done before.
Yeah, we had.
I did that up there. And he told at the time, and that's already, oh geez, that's probably five years old already, if not six, maybe even seven years already. And you, longevity wise, you can typically get a track, a rubberized track. You're lucky if you can get, they say twelve years out of it. It should be every ten.
Okay.
You know, it just depends on how it weathers and how it adhered the first time it went down. You could, some get longer than that. Paint, repainting for sure, probably within ten years, just because of the, the U V component of it. At that time, I asked him, you know, when it comes time to redo this, and again, that's probably well past. But to resurface a track and repaint it, at the time, he told me it's a hundred grand. So, so you gotta tear it all up, you get it back down to asphalt, and then you relay it again, and then you repaint it when it comes to that.
Just the rubber stuff on top.
Yeah. So. And now I would suggest.
I wanted to say the last time we did it was in X M D.
Yeah. But I would suggest now that they use even a different, and I suspect you can probably still get something like you got out here. There's, obviously, there's different.
Types of surface.
Well, yeah, and that the price goes up every time that you get something that's a little bit more viable and durable, can withstand the elements, I suspect. You're also wondering, just have to investigate that, but redoing what we put down, which was rubber, just like you guys, and painted the same way, exact same way, you know, he told me, he said, you know, in about fifteen years, he said, you can expect it's gonna be somewhere between a hundred, a hundred and a quarter, is what he said, so.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, now we're on to action items, approve financial report.
Put it in your packet at your Goldenrod sheet there. Craig, if you got anything there. Oh, it's taxes coming. You getting any?
We got some, yeah, but it's not the, no, it's not the new amount, it's still from the last. Let me get, um. Maybe Goldenrod sheet. Can't remember off the top of my head, sorry, Chris. Yeah, three hundred and seventy-three in the generals, so. A good portion. And when you look at the comparisons from the years past, I mean, we're right a little bit ahead from last year.
Craig, I never took the time to look back. What we actually borrowed those certificates for, what's the rate of interest? Do you remember?
No, you tested the general. Three?
I should look back myself quick.
Was it three, Craig?
No, there, no.
Yeah.
Well, I know what we're getting on our savings account.
Was it four something? Yeah, I don't remember.
I think it had to be higher.
Because things were going out this time.
Yeah. So that was last. When was that?
So we let bids in February, and once February and March, I think you turned around in February, April.
Here we are, yeah.
You got it, you got it. Because the plans on the, the plans on the blueprint is February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. And that's when we opened bids and stuff somewhere, yeah.
Seemed really expensive then. Doesn't seem too bad now, I guess.
I agree. Anyway, so it was just a wild thought. I didn't, I didn't know what we were getting for interest at the bank.
We're getting, on those certificates, on what the, the dollar amount, we're getting three point four six.
What is it?
Three point four six.
That's where I, that's where I got that number.
And you can't be over the arbitrage rate.
Right, yeah.
Because, I mean, it's less than what we're getting on our other savings accounts, but it's because of the arbitrage rate.
That's not at the bank, right?
It is. Everything is at the bank.
It's all at the bank right now on the savings account.
So, yeah, we, when we got deposited the seven alone, Craig, you might read on that number.
Seven even. It was, you just add two million to that number that we have there. It's seven, seven million, four thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine oh five is what was deposited in that.
So, and you've been breaking that up a little bit as far as.
Yeah, in the savings, so we're getting, yeah.
It's right at, we've, what we've expensed is what's been pretty much almost.
But your investment, you're investing those dollars no more than what you're allowed to do because of your arbitrage rate.
Yeah, that whole amount is, that's why I put it in a whole different line there. That's the certificate side, it's a savings account separate from everything else. And then as we pay the bills, I move, move it over, take it out.
I mean, we were gonna come out, pretty good chunk of change ahead by just by the number of dollars we were investing in that.
Yes, it was.
Yeah. I think we're, we're over a hundred already. Thousand. But I haven't seen it, you know, you won't see it till the very, very end of it.
Sure, sure, sure.
It's on the statement, it's. I don't wanna quote them on one here, but I found those certificate deals, but I don't, I've got so many copies of them.
Yeah.
I don't know which one was the correct one.
I couldn't find either. I won't either, you know?
See, that's not, I guess that's too many of them, that person, so. Any other questions on there?
Nope.
Did make the first interest payment in your bills, did you saw that?
We did. For the, and then another of the Q Z A bond deals, so that'll be at seven, what? We have two or three of those left.
Okay. Question, next up, a motion to approve the financial report.
Move by Paul and Samuel Schumpf, are there any other discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Item B and action items, approve A S B S D land, that's a name.
So, yeah, last year, so that's your legislative action network, does it need, so when the legislative section gets hopping and stuff. I, John, I didn't believe your name was on that last year, you volunteered, so pushing out those emails and stuff, especially when it's, they need some help, they need some support of, you know, emailing our delegates, our, our representatives out there that, hey, we need some help on this bill, or, you know? And if something that's really pertinent, I usually try to craft something and maybe push it out to you guys that you guys can just kinda attach it and, you know, do your own email with them, too. But it's, they ask every year to, a lot of why, but they want, you know, board action on who you're designee is, so. If John's willing to do it, I'm.
Yeah, unless somebody has a craving, desire to wanna do it.
To our man, John.
So appointed.
Item C, approve safe return to school plan.
Now, I don't see anybody here, and I know we did this early September, and we kinda took the the five day component out of that as far as teachers, but we've been acting that way, we've been pretty good. I couldn't even tell you what the COVID cases are right now. Last time I ever even heard of one, and I suspect we've had more than one, but they're not telling us, or they're not going, or it is what it is. But we have to, according with the S R, with the law, every six months, we have to put it on a board agenda to say, hey, we had a discussion about our safe return to school plan, so.
Do we have any comments? We need a motion to approve them, or?
Yeah.
As well, except the motion to approve the safe return to school plan.
I put as presented to the board.
There you go, there you go.
Move by Turner.
Second.
Second by Schumpf, are there any other discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye. Pull the same sign. Motion carried.
Item D, declare item surplus.
Um, you know, what I put in there, notes, I had an inquiry about what are you doing with that little floor scrubber? The issue with the floor scrubber, you know, as far as trying to establish a value of that thing, it's, you know, most of what we just declared, we declare disposable, means it's not worth anything, we just throw it away. Um, this is a little bit different story. It's actually a piece of equipment that's still functional, you can use it. Um, we don't, it's sitting in the back of the shop, doing nothing. Um, so, and I know Craig and I, we talked about, you know, when we did got the new one, that we had to probably get rid of that. Just one of those things, move it to the back of the room. We did anything with it. So two ways to do that. If it's value of more than five hundred dollars, which in my opinion, doesn't matter what my opinion is, it's your guys' opinion, you know, then it's gotta be going through a couple different channels that are, you're gonna put a value on it. And then if you wanted to just declare surplus at that point in time, you can do it one of two ways. It's been declared surplus, you wanna get rid of it, you can put it out for bids, you know, tell us what you want for it. Or you can put a price on it and say, this is what it's worth, and this is what we want for it. And somebody comes and writes you a check, you can do it that way, too. So. I don't know which way you wanna go about doing it. We did determine a value of it based on some, a couple vendor feedbacks, that's how they would do it.
The age of the machine, yeah, based on the age.
What they kinda come up with.
So it's basically, you can take the model, which is, I think it was twenty fourteen, right, so it was nine years. Take the, the value of it and divide by nine, so what you paid for.
It was twelve thousand when we purchased.
Twelve thousand, like nine fifty or six fifty divided, so your well fourteen, fifteen hundred bucks is what depreciate, what it depreciates out to. So well more is worth than the five hundred dollars that's over here. So we have to establish something there. And I believe it's probably worth, you know, fifteen hundred bucks. It's got little things, but it runs and operates. It sucks, it scrubs, it does all that, but, I mean, it's just got little things here and there that at some point in time, it's, it may nickel and dime you a little bit. But it can scrub a floor.
I guess I would, we don't always just put stuff out for bid, is that normally what we do, or?
No, we can just put a, the model number and stuff and put it in the paper and just seal bids.
Except sealed by such and such a date.
And you can, and you can put that, you can advertise it with a reserve, knowing that you're gonna, you know, accept only.
Because in the past, when we did that at the band trailer, they tried to get it for like three hundred dollars. That was like a three thousand dollar band trailer that had already been used, and we, we, we just didn't accept any of the, any of the bids that came in when that happened.
And you put that in the refusal to accept or reject any and all, but I think, you know, if you put it, you say out there, too, that there's a reserve on it, you know?
Okay, go with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll do that.
Okay.
So do we need?
It does need to be declared surplus.
That's all we need to do, right, is declare a surplus, right?
You're doing a motion for that, so. It's a twenty fourteen Avenger floor scrubber.
Is that what it was? I didn't have to.
You do need a motion?
Yeah, we do.
I'll move.
Move by Elijah, second by Turner to declare the twenty fourteen Avengers floor scrubber surplus. Any other discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign, motion carried.
Okay, that is all for open session. I will ask for a motion to recess.
No, we don't need a motion, it's just recess.
Just recess, okay. So recess for five minutes and return an executive session.
Yep. Thanks, Mrs. Schumpf.